Week is the EMT.
Okay.
So the other two.
We're going to read through these things.
No, just going to read them just one time and say.
I think they deserve it.
I do too.
Yeah.
And then we have the one for Tyler for the Eagle Scout for the EMT, but we don't have the plaque yet.
We did that last week.
No, we did Eagle Scout last week for him. Tonight is the the EMT.
Where's the thing?
It's not. I gave. So the the plaque from last week for the Eagle Scout, I gave to Tyler's mom because that was last week. But we don't have the EMT plaque for this week.
Oh, so we're not going to do EMT this week.
So you wanted, yeah, because it's your.
You could read it.
So he has an EMT. Where's the EMT one?
So you're going to.
Same exact one.
I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulties at the moment. Good evening, everybody. We just completed executive session which began about 6:00 PM this evening on March 21st of 2022 in the superintendent's office here at Gray Street, West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation miscellaneous and old business matters. The meeting had been advertised and was compliant with the Open Publics Meeting Act and NJ SA 10:4-6, which is also known as Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. We are now going to begin the regular public monthly meeting here in the Harrison Conference Room on March 22nd, 2022, beginning at approximately 7:05 PM. The Board of Education meeting will be live livestreamed. All community questions and comments will be welcomed in person here at the Harrison School Conference Room. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Monthly Public Meeting is compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJ SA 10:4, which is also known as Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress Caldwell, New Jersey, Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, Tap into, West Essex, and notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Offices here at the Harrison School Building and have been delivered to the clerks of both Caldwell and West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can I ask you to take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Here.
Mr. Elko?
Here.
Ms. Getty?
Here.
Ms. Grasso?
Here.
Mr. Cipuletti?
Here.
All right, five members present, no absences. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we also please stand for pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, any communications to share?
None.
Dr. Conklin, the superintendent's report.
Um, I have three things, one that's not on the agenda. We finally have our speaker. People in the back, I hope that you can hear us now. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much technology and thank you very much. Um, two months of waiting for the speaker to come in, so we're just glad that we have it. Um, I have a few Eagle Scout recognitions and one Essex First Aid Squad student recognition. If you'd like to share that were present, that'd be great.
Yes, I would love to. So let's start with the EMT. Uh, Tyler, would you mind coming up and we'll read this? No, I think you were here last time, weren't you? So you're just getting plaque after plaque, okay? All right, so let's uh, let me read this with this, just so that I'll make it easier, okay? Um, so this is a resolution honoring Tyler Romaine. Uh, whereas Tyler Romaine has earned, okay, so now we're going to work with the uh, whereas Tyler has earned the rank of EMT?
Earned, you can say I earned my EMT certification.
Thank you so much. My EMT certification. And whereas Tyler Romaine has demonstrated individuality in designing and providing leadership to provide a service project for the.
Do you want me to just kind of.
This wording isn't going to work.
I can kindly make it up.
Why don't you help me?
That's the Eagle Scout?
Yeah, I went through my EMT certification for about four months, five months. Took an EMT exam, certified me to be on the back of an ambulance as a reliable member for the community for anything first aid related. So it's basic life saving, so it's the first step in that whole kind of process. There you go.
Thank you so much. Tyler, this is your plaque from last week? Next, next time we need.
That's totally fine.
Tyler, I'll bring it to school. I'll bring you, I'll bring the plaque to school when we have it done.
Okay, now we're going to try to get back on track. Okay, so we have two Eagle Scouts. Um, and I'm going to ask each of them to come up individually. I'll read this and then if you could just talk to us a little bit about what your project was, that'd be awesome. Okay, so the first one we're going to start with is is Matthew Robson. So Matthew, I'm going to read this one and I'm going to do a better job on this one than I. Okay, so this is a resolution honoring Matthew Robson. Whereas Matthew Robson has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, scouting's highest award. And whereas Matthew Robinson, Robson, I'm sorry, has demonstrated individuality in designing and providing the leadership to complete a service project necessary to earn Eagle Scout Eagle Scout status. And whereas, whereas the Eagle Scout Challenge embodies the highest ideals of honor, loyalty, courage, leadership and service embraced by the Caldwell West Caldwell Public Schools. And whereas Matthew Robson has exemplified these ideals as a student and member of the community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education takes great pride in recognizing and commending Mr. Robson for his achievement on this seventh day of March 2022.
So my Eagle Scout project was the construction and staining of seven picnic tables for the Essex County Environmental Center. Uh, this process, I was helped with fourteen scouts who did over fifty hours of total hours of community service. And I also had the help of five adults who put in a combined over fifteen hours. So it was really a community effort. Uh, the scouting community really came together, especially through the pandemic, to help me through this process and get the project done and completed on time relative.
Great.
That's great.
We'll do, let's do one more and then we'll do pictures of each separately, okay? Okay, this second resolution is honoring Daniel McCurby. Okay, Daniel, I'll read this for you and then if you can just tell us a little bit about your project, but I'll read this first, okay? Um, again, the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Resolution honoring Daniel McCurby. Whereas Daniel McCurby has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, scouting's highest award. And whereas Daniel McCurby has demonstrated individuality in designing and providing the leadership to complete a service project necessary to to attain Eagle Scout status. And whereas the Eagle Scout Challenge embodies the highest ideals of honor, loyalty, courage, leadership and service embraced by the Caldwell West Caldwell Public Schools. And whereas Daniel McCurby has exemplified these ideals as a student and member of the community. Thereby be it resolved that the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education takes great pride in recognizing and commending Daniel McCurby for his achievements on this seventh day of March 2022.
I would like to tell you about my project. So just like to thank you all for having me. Daniel McCurby, Eagle Scout Troop Nine, as you already know. So my project was also with the Essex County Environmental Centers, like Matt. I helped build twenty duck nesting boxes for the environmental center. Basically, they're for wood ducks and the spring they nest, they raise their babies in there. You know, it's uh, it's great. So the the project totaled about sixty-one hours of service. That includes youth and adults. Uh, we had plenty of adults and scouts help. Uh, overall, I'd say the project gave me a lot of leadership experience with delegation, teaching younger scouts how to to work with wood and tools, working with other leaders my age and helping them, you know, teach scouts because, you know, I can't do the entire thing. So I delegate roles to them and they help teach the younger scouts just like I do. Also, it gave me a lot of experience with communication, talking with the beneficiary, working with our local scout council and, you know, going back and forth about the whole Eagle application process. Really put all my scouting skills to use and also the skills I've learned as being a part of this wonderful school district. Learned through school with peer leaders, tennis, I've got a lot of experience in that regard. So yeah, I couldn't have done it without the help of all my other scouts and adults, especially Mr. Nankos, who's my project coach. A lot of thanks to him. And Mr. Alexander was my beneficiary representative. So yeah, thanks for having me.
Thank you. We have a break for pictures. We're going to take a two-minute break for pictures. Matthew, you want to come up with your family? Good. I have a couple of more announcements I'd like to share. Um, one, we'd like to recognize and honor a couple swimmers. Um, first Finn Coogan Russell. Um, Finn had an incredible season this year and I guess it's continuing as we as we kind of speak and he's at practice tonight. Finn was the SEC County slash Conference Champion in both the 50 Freestyle and 100 Butterfly. And he finished third overall at the NJ High School Meet of Champions. Uh, this was the highest finish for a boy swimmer in JCHS swimming history. Now Finn will be going to and be joined by his close friend Tommy Nappy. Uh, they will both be swimming at the YMCA National Championships in Greensboro, North Carolina, starting on March 28th. So congratulations to both Tommy and Finn. Uh, in addition, uh, on our our female team, Charlotte Lepis, Ella Lepis and Caroline Murray will also be, will be competing in the Speedo Sectional Championship in Buffalo, New York this coming weekend. So again, congratulations to all our swimmers and hopefully they're very successful in their travels um, and their competition this coming weekend. And then Paul, you want to?
Sure, thank you. So just a couple of comments and announcements. I wanted everybody to remember that Matilda was going to be at the high school this weekend. It'll be Thursday, Friday and Saturday night and then Sunday afternoon. And I don't know if any of you remember years ago when they did the Wizard of Oz and you remember that they had the kids from elementary school and middle school and everybody joined in for that play. Well, Matilda is much the same way. I know that there are kids that are participating from the elementary school. Um, I'm not sure about the middle school. There's one middle school, yeah. One middle school student and also the high school. So I, if you have a chance, go out. I think it'll be really, really wonderful and I think it's wonderful that so many kids are involved this year. It's a great thing. Um, I also wanted to take a moment and I know that our basketball team did not win the state finals. But I just wanted to congratulate them. The amount of effort that goes into playing and to get to that that degree or that height and that level takes a lot of work. So I wanted to congratulate them and their coaches and thank them for all their efforts. I was, I thought I would be on time getting down there and have enough place to park by leaving at 6:30. Well, I ended up down at the pool, parking down at the pool and walking up. But it was wonderful to see a packed house. I mean, they literally turned people away. So it's wonderful to see the community come out and support our kids. And I hope you do that for Matilda this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Now we're going to go back to the agenda for the approval of minutes. Um, and ask for a motion to approve the public conference meeting minutes and executive session minutes from February 7th of 2022 and the regular month, oh god, public monthly meeting minutes and executive session minutes from February 14th of 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Brian, will I ask you to take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipuletti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion passed.
Thank you. We now move to public comments on agenda items and please hold them to agenda items only at this time. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer, must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes in duration and may only address items on the agenda. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that said topic have been heard. And all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Do you have any questions or comments on the agenda at this time?
Hi, I'm Sue Callahan and I'm president of CWCEA and English teacher at James Caldwell High School. But I'm here representing elementary teachers. The person who was supposed to speak tonight on this issue was not able to be here. Um, I'm referencing item six under finance, which is the purchase of textbooks or textbook purchase for the guided reading program. And um, I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. Before before this, you know, approval was made, were the teachers consulted to as to the success that they see of this particular program? And, you know, since it's a rhetorical question, I know the answer is no, they were not. And I know there's mixed feeling about the program. And I just would like to caution that before we go ahead and spend $150,000 that maybe the administration would consult the teachers and get some feedback as to how successful the program is and if that money is actually a good use of funds. Um, and so specifically, and I, you know, I had there's the whole bullet point and I can't really speak to it because I'm not familiar with it. So I only feel comfortable just saying that over the course of this year with all the issues that teachers have brought to the board and the administration, guided reading has been very high on the list. In fact, I think it's going to be the topic that we want to talk about this week at the elementary roundtable. Um, but, you know, essentially, teachers see it as a flaw. And I shouldn't say all teachers and that's why I want the board and the administration to, you know, reach out and see, you know, what do people think of this program? Um, but I've heard that it is a flawed program with a series, uh, with serious limitations. Fontis, and I'm probably pronouncing it wrong, and Pennell and the Lucy Colkins Units of Studies have received the lowest possible scores when rated by an independent group. So there are many teachers that have expressed concerns with this program, feel that that it is not a balanced program and that the effort of guided reading is detracting rather than helping with with the reading scores. So I, you know, I just caution, I mean, I think it's great that you want to support the teachers and give them the guided reading programs because I know it was at a meeting where people said, oh, you know, that, you know, that some of the, some of the materials are better than others. So I think that the intentions here may be good, but I do think that it's a little premature and we should be really looking at how successful is the program and do we want to continue to invest money in it? So that's me representing the elementary teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue. Any other questions or comments on the agenda? Okay, if not, we're going to move into committee reports and I do believe we have a committee report this evening.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Um, so today's committee report is on the Finance and Facilities Committee. So this committee actually met on March 3rd. Um, and present was Dr. Conklin, Mr. McCarthy, Ms. Jones, Ms. Getty and myself. We went through a whole bunch of different things. I just, you know, when we, when I give these committee reports, just try to hit the high points to make sure you guys know kind of what's going on behind the doors in these meetings. One of the things that we discussed that actually was talked about a lot last meeting was the refunding of the bond, which conceptually is really kind of like a refinancing of of our debt related to the bond. Um, this is a long process and in the time that it took us to start investigating this process to now, the market has actually changed pretty dramatically. So it's unlikely that we'll go through with that because we're not going to necessarily see the value if we were to go ahead and refund that bond right now. However, by voting for it, we're now, we now have the authority to, if the market does get to a point where it makes sense for us to go ahead and take that action, we can go ahead and take that action. There was some discussion regarding that and I want to thank Mr. McCarthy for all the work that he did. Just making sure that, I think it's important to show our work. You know, not everything always works out, but a lot of work goes into making sure we're prepared to take advantage of opportunities, especially when it comes to fiscal responsibilities. So I want to make sure that we highlight some of that stuff. You'll also see in the agenda, number one is use of school facilities. We talked through all the different ways that our school district is able to help the community generally. You'll see that, you know, our facilities are used by the direct department of Caldwell, by the HSAs, by the Education Foundation, by the soccer clubs, by the lacrosse clubs, by Little League. So in that way, the school's actually able to give out, give back to the community a little bit. We're very happy to help out and do that. Another item under the agenda is the refuse contract. This goes back to showing our work. Um, our contract was up and the district did a lot of work trying to find um, essentially the best offer we could get regarding refuse, including even going to some other areas and seeing if there's some shared service opportunities. At the end of the day, we only got one proposal, so we're going to take it. But we did start opening the door for discussions for the next time, potentially exploring some shared service opportunities to lower that cost. Also, we talked about, and I mentioned this last time, and this is actually something that we continuously talk about, is our facilities review, which is a strategic approach to our, all of our facilities, all of our buildings in the district. And do we have enough space? Are they modernized? Are they safe? And what kind of capital investments do we need to make in order to get our facilities where they need to be? Um, one major step in this strategic approach was the demographer report, which many of you saw last week, to kind of get an understanding on where the the communities sit and where they're going to be as the years progress. Um, the next step is an RFP where we're going to find a professional who can come in and give us an extremely thorough analysis of all of our buildings and tell us where we're strong and where we need a little bit of help and where we can focus in the future to try to improve all of our different facilities. Um, finally, if you look through the agenda, you're going to see that there's a lot of budget information in there. It's just about that time, so tonight we're going to be approving a tentative budget. That budget's going to go to the state for review and then it'll come back to us. And we're hoping by the May 2nd meeting, there'll be a more thorough review from the district about what's in the budget and what your money's going to. And there's a couple of things in there that are some longstanding projects that I know we've been talking about that we're pretty excited about. So I hope you're paying attention. Um, we believe that meeting will be May 2nd. And that was the finance committee report.
Thank you, Chris. And now we're going to move to curriculum and technology for a vote.
Okay. Um, for curriculum and technology, the superintendent makes the following recommendations to the Board of Education. I will make a motion to approve item numbers one through six on this evening's agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Brian, can I, can you take the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipuletti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Brian, and personnel? Ms. Getty?
Thank you. This evening, um, under personnel, the superintendent makes the following recommendations to the Board of Education. I make a motion to approve certificated staff item letters A through N and non-certificated staff item letters A through C on this evening's agenda, agenda under personnel. And before we move on, I would like to make some comments. Um, first, I'd like to go to the retirements under certificated staff. Um, I know last week we talked a lot about Jeannie Gertie and her retirement and tonight I would like to add to that, Iliana Avilas. Um, both of those, I, in speaking with Jeannie after the meeting last week, she's been with the district forty years. And I'm sorry, I don't know Iliana's length of tenure. Does anybody, do any of the teachers know? But I would.
About ten.
About ten years? But I would just like to thank them for their service also to the district. I know, again, um, we're talking about all that accumulated knowledge that that will be missing. So thank you for for the time and energy and everything that you've put in to the district and specifically for the children. It's very much appreciated. I would also like to, um, congratulate Mr. Lincoln, who is with us this evening. As everyone knows, he was at the high school and he stepped over to Wilson Elementary School. And I understand that the kindergartners there absolutely love him and adore him. So I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you on behalf of the district for stepping in. Welcome aboard.
Do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, except Mr. Lincoln, if mom's watching. Now she knows. So more Lincoln, we hope you're watching.
And one unknown fact is he's 0-1 in basketball games so far from what we were told, so, okay. Those fifth graders.
Now they better watch out.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Brian, can I ask you to take the roll, Paul?
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipuletti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you. And finance and facilities, Chris?
Yeah, um, regarding the items on the agenda for finance and facilities, I'm going to suggest that we reserve decision on number six, which is the textbook purchase raised by Ms. Callahan and, uh, move instead that we approve items number one through five and numbers seven and eight on this evening's agenda under finance and items number one and two under facilities.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Brian, can I ask you to take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipuletti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you. And Chris, can I ask you to do policy, please?
For policy, I have a motion to approve item numbers one and two on this evening's agenda under policy.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Now, Brian, can I ask you to take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. D'Ambole?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Getty?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipolletti?
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Brian. And now we're going to move into public comments. Again, public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer, must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements should be limited to three minutes in duration. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic, until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Have any questions or comments outside of the agenda?
Board President, I just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
I sent an email out earlier today about March 28th, the question and answer for curriculum. It's not required, it's optional. Some people may have thought it was required that they have to attend. They don't have to attend. We do ask that they send questions prior to the meeting by March 24th to Ms. Caitlin Jones, the Assistant Superintendent, so we can best respond to their questions.
Great.
All right? And I'm going to send out a reminder tomorrow via email as well that it's not required, it's optional.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
And although it is optional, we do highly encourage parents to come and, you know, learn as much as they can about the curriculum as possible. Any other questions?
Hi, just quick, Alexis Martin, 42 Johnson. Are they, are they going to take any questions from the floor? Or they, if they haven't been submitted by the 24th, they, no one gets to ask questions like the day of? Or like, can we ask a question in response to what is being given to us?
We'll answer questions. If we haven't before, we could probably give a more full-throated response. If you asked during the, the meeting and we don't have a specific response, it may be something that gets posted on the website and gets answered later if it's very specific. We might not have a specific enough answer for you, and we'll just say, I'll have to get back to you on that specific question.
Okay.
So that's why we want them ahead of time, so we could go through the questions ahead of time. These are the questions that were posted. These are the response to those questions, and then are there any questions from the audience, and then we'll kind of kick it off from there.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi there, Terri DiMartini Greenlee, 35 Woodrow Place. I agree with you, Ms. Getty, that the sporting events have been wonderful. Likewise, many thanks to the middle school for the awesome dance that they gave the children on Friday night. It sounded like it was a blast. And in the beginning of March, I was really lucky to get to go into my children's elementary school to see an incredible band concert of fourth and fifth grade graders. And it was so amazing to be back in the building. So I do want to just ask, is it possible, or is the district considering more opportunities for parents to get back into the classrooms, such as mystery readers, being able to volunteer? We did ask this last week to our building principal, and we were told that it was a district decision at this time, because of cohorts, that parents could not come in the buildings at this time yet to volunteer. So is there a timeline that we could hear about, maybe?
It's not a district decision, it's a recommendation that we're following from the New Jersey Department of Health to make sure that we're still limiting exposure to students and keeping students in cohorts, and limiting outside people from coming in, because we don't know where they've been or if they've been exposed, and being able to track that is, is very challenging. We're hoping, like everyone else, that we continue to see a decrease. I think when we were having that conversation, Essex County was in the green and then has went back to yellow. So we're still concerned about the transmission. I've been responding, posting daily reports. Past two days have been positive, zero. We hope that continues, the trend continues, but then last week I posted three in one day. So we're, we're kind of looking at it in that way. We're hoping, once we get back into the green, we could start allowing more, and the Department of Health will then change their recommendations, but at this point, we need to continue to follow their recommendations.
Okay. So for when there is, I know a lot of us would be really excited to have the opportunities to return and volunteer.
Well, we want to get back to normalcy as much as everyone else, if not more.
Yeah. Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Any other question?
Beth Dean Memorial wrote, I had a question about the renovation of Harrison School. That's $1,400,000 to do that. Didn't we just renovate Harrison School? Do we have a bond for that recently? So...
I'll, I'll defer in a minute to Brian. On the fiscal side, the good news is that this isn't going to have any tax impact. So this is being covered, majority of which is going to be covered by grants, and then the remainder is going to be covered by, by capital funds that we are having in the budget. We did a partial renovation of Harrison School. So this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the idea here is to complete the renovation so all of the, all the different classrooms are available to be used as classrooms, and also certain areas of the building that aren't classroom accessible can become classrooms. And that will allow us to potentially expand our use of Harrison and ease some of the burden potentially on, from some of the other schools. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that's pretty accurate what you said.
Right. So you're, so you're sending some grant money and then moving money from...
Capital reserves.
Rainy day fund, kind of thing, right? So then they'll have less money in the rainy day fund.
Well, it's a capital reserve, so that money is set aside for this purpose.
Right, right.
And we actually expect this year, because of the way the budget is going to work out, to be replenishing that capital reserve, so we're actually not going to suffer a, a net loss. It's, sometimes, you know, our, our, we're very lucky, and this was mentioned when we had the audit, and it doesn't get a lot of press, which is why I do like a long monologue about the Finance, the Finance Facilities Committee. Our district is actually really good at handling finances, and it, it doesn't always get the spotlight that it should get, but especially over the last year, the ability to improve technology in the district, to, to really pursue one-to-one usage through grants and through things that don't impact the taxpayers, and now this opportunity to attack a real substantial issue, which is the ability to house all of our students comfortably. You know, because when I, when I was in, in middle school, I spent one of my grades in Roxbury High School in a trailer, and I know there's some other areas that, that do that. The idea here is to get out in front of those concepts, to get, to get out in front of those issues, so we don't have to worry about it in the moment. And this is a great opportunity, if we have the money available and we have the grant money, close to $1 million, ready to go. If we don't use that money, it won't get used at all. And that's $1 million that we're actually out, really. So that, that's the idea behind why we're spending it, and I think they're doing a great job of making sure that we're using it judiciously, and we're using it for, for programs that are going to improve systemically how the district performs across the board.
So is the idea then that, say, for instance, kindergarten would move to Harrison School?
We don't know what's going to happen yet. The idea of the demographer report was to give us an idea of where the age groups are going, which we've done. And then the idea is, hey, let's have more classrooms, not less. Let's have, let's have space that children can utilize, as opposed to space, if you walk around this building and you're familiar with it, there's lots of chunks of this building that can't be utilized by children, can't be utilized for teaching. So the idea is to prepare the building, and then at that point, which is not tomorrow and not the next day, you know, because right now, we're just getting plans done, right? We can then decide, all right, what's the best use of that facility? But we have not, really even had deep discussions on that yet.
So for instance, this side of the building would become classrooms? Like this, over this side is pretty much classrooms?
This is where I have to, I have to shut up and defer to the guys who know what the plans say.
And then, like where there are main offices, then those would be prepared to be classrooms?
So the plans are still being developed specifically for that? There's an opportunity for 13 classrooms, 14 classrooms, or 15 classrooms? It really depends how we allocate the space. So it's not necessarily this side, that side. All the usable classroom space will either be classroom space, or maybe a library, maybe a related services room, it really depends. But they have to renovate the rooms to put bathrooms in all the classrooms. The bathrooms that are in there now aren't up to code, so they'd have to make all the bathrooms of the unrenovated classrooms up to code. So the ones that are on the left side of the building have been already renovated, the ones on the right side and the back of the building, plus the other non-instructional space in the center of the building, where you're standing in one of them right now, would be renovated to allow for either instructional space or office space, depending on what happens. So we're waiting for those plans. Once those plans come in, they then get approved, and if those plans are approved and accepted and voted on by the board, then we move forward with putting that out for bid. The bid comes back, we accept it or reject it, and if we accept it, then the construction begins, which could take another year. So it's premature to have any conversation about what actually Harrison School would become until we, we know where we are in, in about a year or so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
But I will say, Ms. Dean, as someone who has intimate knowledge of our largest elementary school, if you have any suggestions or thoughts or proposals, then you should definitely share them with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, we are going to be moving into executive session. The purpose of that meeting is to discuss personnel, litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting has been advertised and is complying with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10 colon four dash six, which is also known as Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Motion has been made by Ms. Grasso and seconded by Mr. D'Ambole. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education shall enter executive session at approximately 7:45 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Poll in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Extentiums, motion carried. Thank you.